I'd like to call this meeting the Columbia County Board of Commissioners to order for this Tuesday, February the 7th, 2017. If you would, bow your heads with me. Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for this little bit of spring in the middle of winter. And thank you, Lord, that you continue to bless Columbia County. And Lord, we even thank you for the challenges that are put before us because we know in these challenges we become stronger. But also, it reflects our need of how much we need your guidance. And we ask for your wisdom with us tonight and in all meetings, that whatever is said and done will be to glorify you and in the best interest of the people we serve. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, and to my nation, God, invisible, ever and just forever.
We do have a forum tonight with all five commissioners present. If you've had a chance to look at the minutes of our previous meeting of January the 17th, we'll take a motion for their approval.
No move.
Any items needing clarification? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Johnson, I believe we have at least one change to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration and approval, we would ask to add item I-3A, which is the bond resolution number 17-013. And also, I believe under the presentation section, our underwriter would like to make a presentation.
Okay, we'll include those in the agenda as approved. Again, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the commission. As always, these proceedings are videotaped. Be happy for you to obtain a copy of the disc, or rather, not a tape. If you desire, make an application through our county clerk here, we'll have one sent to you. Remind you too, that these proceedings will be on the county website in three or four days. You'll be able to go there and click on the meeting that you would like to see the presentations. Remind you too, that you're invited to speak to this body. If you're not already on the agenda, we ask that you fill out a speaker form and bring it up to Ms. Crowley here, and we'll recognize you at the proper time during the meeting. Moving now to our special recognition, which is always a good time in our commission meetings, when we honor one of our own employees. Tonight, we have Employee of the Month for January, Mr. Stephen Anderson from the Riverside Park Recycling Center. Commissioner Richardson will make that presentation. Ms. Jeanne Hinson, our recycling manager, to assist with this.
Stephen, I'd like to recognize you as Employee of the Month. First off, I'd like to thank you for your service. Bob did... Not only... Bob gets done. All right, and we...
We have a lot of members in our team, and everybody does a phenomenal job. And for one of our own to be able to stand out and be Employee of the Month, that makes us very proud of him. Thank you for everything you do.
Congratulations, Stephen. I believe you... Mr. Johnson, he gets a day off and something?
He does. A day off and he gets a check that goes along with that for being Employee of the Month.
Does he get an umbrella?
I'd be glad to give him an umbrella. I'm not sure if that's part of the deal, but remind me that I owe you an umbrella.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations.
We now have one of the items added, Mr. Mark Wyder from Jeffries Group to come and give us some information about our bond issue. He has a little history and the results of what happened today, and I guess yesterday, and sometime into the past.
Sometime in the past, and I thank you so much for being up here again. This is such an honor every time. You all have been loyal to me, I appreciate that. We... Before I start, I want to say, I get to stand up here and talk about how well things went. But the truth is, all of you are to credit, Scott, Chris, John Pennell, Gray Pennell, Woodward, the whole staff. Great staff to work with, great folks to work with. So, the county went out in the general election in November the 8th and asked the voters if they would approve a $60 million bond issue for a variety of projects, a lot of which I would call lifestyle projects. We started the process before November, they actually had public meetings. As you all know, I'm telling you everything you already know. Public meetings to get input. We started the... The election came in November. Immediately, the working team jumped on the bond issue. We brought the rating agencies down here, Scott's idea, which I thought was a great one. The rating agencies had not come to Columbia County before. So, in the middle of December, from New York, they traveled down to Columbia County. Unfortunately, it was about 40 and rainy that day. But despite that, we had an extremely successful outcome, which I'll talk about in one second. But what was... What really was outstanding to me as a... From a client perspective, is how involved each of you commissioners were and all the staff were. Really truly was an overwhelming presentation. We received our ratings in mid-January. We started marketing the transaction back at the end of January, the early part of February, and we took those bonds to market today. I'll talk about those results. And then we're going to close the bond issue and fund the money to the county next Tuesday. The next page, and I want to really focus on this because this is quite an achievement by the county. I started working with the county, I was fortunate to start working with the county about 17, 18 years ago. And I think at the time, you might have had one single A rating. And since that time, the county has grown into now two of three triple A ratings. The most recent being Moody's. There are only a handful of counties out of 159 in Georgia that enjoy a single triple A, much less two. And there's not a single county outside of the metro area of Atlanta. So, you get to have the triple A and not have to be in Atlanta to get the triple A. I'd like to take just one second because it's important. We get feedback from the rating agencies until we get reports back. These are reports that all of you, I think, have seen. And the message that we get back from the rating agencies is that Columbia County has had superb and consistent... Underlying the consistent leadership. And the message from Moody's, the last quote here is, "Financial position will remain healthy given management's demonstrated commitment to conservative budgeting and maintenance of strong reserves." Lauren Von Bardan, the analyst from Moody's, in one of her words to me after she told me that you all were upgraded to triple A, said Columbia County does what it's going to do and does what it says it's going to do. And that consistency was what got them ultimately to the triple A. So, kudos to all of you for that. Last page, and I'm going to keep this short and sweet. So, we sold bonds today, 60 million in bonds. We went out about 9:30 this morning, and by about 11:30, we'd had about 80 million in orders for 60 million in bonds. We had over 25 investors. We... Very interestingly, today, and you don't get this very often, normally you're looking for some sort of a comparison to see how you did compared to the rest of the market. Today, you just happen to have in the bond market Augusta Richmond County Schools, which is rated AA+, and DeKalb County Schools rated AA+, also issued bonds, quarter bonds, but issued bonds the same day. Three direct comparisons, Columbia County triple A, DeKalb AA+, Augusta Richmond. Your bond's priced anywhere from 10 to 17 basis points below those two other bond issues. That's a direct and tangible testament to the county. If you were to translate that over $60 million over the life of this bond issue, that's probably... That triple A probably saved the county close to $2 million. So, I give you all the congratulations in the world that you can...
Well, saved the taxpayers close to $2 million.
Saved the taxpayers $2 million. That's exactly right. So, that's all I've got. Happy to answer any questions if anybody...
I'd just like to echo what you said, the effort put forth by the county, particularly for Lee Ann Reese in the financial area, who always does a tremendous job. Scott put in tons of time with this, with you and with others. The entire staff that put together the presentations to get the bond referendum passed was just outstanding. And my thanks and congratulations to all of you. Any comments from the commission?
Great work, staff.
I want to thank the citizens for having the confidence to step up and vote to approve such a large challenge. And I think it's a testimony to what... How they feel about the leadership of the county and the staff. And I just... Kudos to them.
And I think Andrew Strickland from the planning department there has really got a tremendous response on this greenway. And we do have a brochure about that. I think you got some on the back table. You'd like to pick one up as you leave and see what that's going to entail over the next few years. I'd be glad for you to have that. Anything else for Mr. Wyder? Again, Mark, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, always a pleasure.
We do have a request concerning a sewer tap from Mr. Steve Chaney. Would you come forward, please? Would you give us a name and address?
Steve Chaney, living Thompson right now. We're in between homes, 2663 McElroy Drive. But anyway, we sold our house in Columbia County, we've been living in Columbia County 20 years. But our ultimate goal was to live on it. My wife retired, and I was forced into retirement when I fell off a ladder, 2011. But anyway, by the grace of the Lord, I'm standing before you today. But anyhow, we didn't... We weren't aware of a $4,000 tap fee for water. We were wondering if there's any way we could use this, back to the original 2,500. Whatever you all can come up with, it's fair.
Mr. Johnson, I believe this is a situation where the initial residents were asked to tap onto this water line when it was ran at a certain price. And after a certain period of time, the cost went up considerably.
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman. I have very limited information on this. I've not spoken to this gentleman, but I did get a little bit of an update from Mr. Clayton on this, but that's my understanding.
Now, I believe this is on Ridge Road up toward the leg there?
Yes.
Have we done anything in the past for... For the later people desiring to get on the system?
Mr. Slocke, I don't believe so. I believe that that was the intent when we originally did it, but I'm not... I don't think there's a precedent for it.
Not aware of one, no, sir.
Mr. Chaney, did you... How long have you owned this property on Ridge Road?
2014.
And the line was ran well ahead of that...
Well ahead of that, so certainly he didn't participate or know... Well, I don't know if he knew or not, but certainly he didn't participate in the original, I guess, negotiations of what the tap fee would be, I don't think.
You were not present for the discounted offer at the beginning?
Oh, there was one. Anyway...
Well, I'm sure it occurred prior to 2014.
Yeah, 2006, I believe.
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct. It was 2005, 2006.
Anyway, we called up to find out what we had to do, and that's what we were told. So, come to the meeting and hear...
Mr. Chaney, we'll take this up with the water utility. We'll have some discussion among ourselves if there's any desire to... It is an unusual case where you were not present, you know, to take up... Accept the initial offer. Not making any promises, but I will promise that we'll discuss it and see, and somebody will be in touch with you.
All right.
What's your timeline? Your timeline for building, or you are...
We are waiting for estimates to come back.
So, we have... Because it will require board, you know, board action, Mr. Chairman. So, we can look at it as staff and look at it and get some direction from the board, but we'd have to bring it back.
Okay.
I mean, I know other people have paid the $4,000, but I'll come in and talk, but...
That's my concern, the people that have already paid the $4,000. They're going to want to come back and want to refund, and then anybody after you, they're going to want the discounted rate, and...
And again, they had the opportunity to come and speak to you.
I think...
Not to.
I understand.
I think that's an important factor is, who had the offer and declined it, as opposed to those where the property has changed hands and those that didn't have the opportunity. So, I think that's just something we've got to discuss. Again, no promises, but we will talk.
It's already been set in stone, and somebody else has already done this, and you got denied, then obviously, I'll be denied. I'm the first one I would shake the consideration.
You just make sure the clerk has your contact information so I can be in touch with you? Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, we have it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Two in the way of comments. We had had some people request to speak concerning the Pam Tucker situation. And we thought that it would resum... Well, prior to the investigation started. I would like to ask if, I believe there was... At least I got two. One was from Karen Ribble. Is Karen with us tonight? The other was Bill LaShaft, is he with us tonight? Do you wish to speak? No, sir, no, sir, would you come to the microphone, please? And give us your name and address.
I'm Bill LaShaft, 3787 Winchester Trail in Petersburg Station. And I just want to say that when I moved here in 97, Pam Tucker was one of the first people I knew, I met in Augusta. And we have worked together for many years, I respect her immensely, I like her immensely. And I think what's happened is a horrible thing. And it's a shame that personalities couldn't have been handled differently, and the grown people couldn't have acted in better manners. But I have a bigger concern than that. Ron, I have voted for you every time you run for office. I've vocally supported you. I sent you an email over that, you didn't bother to return it, and that upsets me. Doug, I voted for you. And I support you, and I will continue to support you. Ron, I would still support you, except if you're not running anymore. And I will still support you, I sent you an email, and you didn't bother to return it. Gray, not in your district. I sent you an email, and you responded within an hour and a half. From that, I want to thank you immensely. And what's done is done, you can't take it back, she can't come back. I, along with... I hope every other member of the cert teams will fully support the dear person. But you all really, really need to look at why this happened and how this happened, and to make sure that it never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And there's one added item, this will not be commented on as long as the investigation is going on. And then that, whether it will be or not, will be determined after the investigation is completed. Then we'll move now to our consent agenda. These are items that's been through the necessary committee to receive votes to be put on consent. If you're satisfied with this content, we'll accept a motion for approval of all of these items as one vote.
No move.
Any items needing clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Moving now to our debate agenda, and I believe we go to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 16-1259 to establish streetlight District 416F for Bartram Trail, Section 9, and authorize Georgia Power to proceed with installation per their proposal.
Okay.
Any discussion of this item? All in favor? We can go to Vice Chair Duncan.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the service agreement with Project Access and the amount of $25,000 to be paid out of the Commissioner's discretionary fund.
This is our continued support of a medical service for indigent citizens of both... Well, of all counties around the entire region.
Yes, sir, we did get a breakdown of what it does serve in Columbia County, and this was an item that was budgeted in last year's budget.
And I believe several years prior to that.
Oh, yes, sir, it's been done for several years, but it is a budgeted item in our current budget that has already been approved.
Further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Duncan?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the chairman to acknowledge the letter to Jeffries LLC for disclosures by sole underwriting for the general obligation bond, Series 2017.
Second.
You have heard the presentation concerning these and the history. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? We will return now to Commissioner Richardson.
I make a motion to approve the request for variance from Section 90-135 signs located at 5045 Parham Road to permit a 171 square foot freestanding sign on the property.
Okay.
So, and this is obvious what it is concerning a sign that's a little bit outside of the normal regulations. All in favor? We go back to Vice Chair Duncan.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve bond resolution number 17-013.
A second?
Motion and a second, dealing with the same item concerning the bond issue. Any other comments? All in favor? Any legal matters pending, Mr. Driver?
Legal matters other than the bond.
Okay, well, that legal matter was a pleasure there. We do have some personnel items. We will go back to Vice Chair Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the mending the contract with Jeremy Wallen at an annual rate of $103,722 and a Category D vehicle allowance.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, give us a little brief capsule of what this concerns.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a situation where we promoted Chief Wallen from administrative chief to deputy chief of the fire department. Upon the retirement of Chief Cooper, we have named Deputy Chief Wallen the interim chief. Because of that, and he's an acting division director, we have asked for a 5% increase in his salary. We've done it routinely in the past, and to give him the same vehicle allowance as other division directors, bring him in line with division directors. And he'll serve in that capacity until the fire chief position is filled.
And that position is being advertised?
Position has been advertised, we've gotten applications. I believe Deputy Administrator Kennedy has been through those applications. Deputy Administrator Slocke have been through those. We do plan to start interviewing in the near future, but I feel at this time, we were in very good hands with Chief Wallen.
And is he a possibility for the full-time chief?
I don't believe he's applied for that, but he may be recruited. We just need to go through these applications and see where we ended up.
Why didn't he apply?
Why didn't you apply, Chief Wallen?
Talking about you.
I think at the time, Mr. Chairman, that Chief Cooper was still here, and Chief Wallen had his eye on becoming the deputy chief, so... and Chief Wallen had his eye on becoming the deputy chief, so some things may have changed.
I'm not pressing that.
The advertisement's still open.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Andrew Leensup from Emergency Operations Specialist to Deputy Director of the EMA with a reclassification of Deputy Director position from grade 23 to grade 26 and an annual salary of $53,726 with a Category C vehicle allowance, excuse me, Category V, C vehicle and smartphone allowances.
And that is to promote, not approve?
To approve. Might as well promote him while we're at it.
Do we have a second? And this is pretty well self-explanatory from what everybody already knows of that situation. Any other comments? All in favor?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve amending the contract with Shelley Blackburn at an annual rate of $65,000 with a Category B vehicle allowance and a smartphone allowance to start February 7th, 2017.
And Mr. Johnson, she will be head of the CVB now, right?
That's correct, this is a recommendation from the CVB board. I believe our division director, John Luton, was part of that process. And Ms. Blackburn has been a longtime employee with the CVB, has done a very good job. She's served as the interim director in the past, and they're very comfortable with that choice, and I think staff is very comfortable with that choice. And pending your final approval, we are excited to start working with Shelley in that capacity.
Further comments? All in favor? We return now to Commissioner Richardson.
I make a motion to approve $3,022 to Augusta Care Pregnancy Center, Inc., PAXMAP 066014 to obtain right-of-way easement and/or property for the Uche Creek Relief Sewer Phase 2 project.
I think that is certainly self-explanatory, any comments? All in favor? One more item, I believe?
I make a motion to approve a quick claim deed to Jim Blanchard Jr., Joe Blanchard, and Willie June Blanchard Morgan for Willie Daniels Drive 60-foot right-of-way tract C, 2.89 acres.
Okay.
I believe, Mr. Slocke, this was a roadway that was abandoned once we put in the driveway to Blanchard.
It was a roadway that was created and then immediately relocated to the new Blanchard Road, Blanchard Woods Parkway Drive. So, this should have gone back to the Blanchard family years ago, and it was never done, so this is correct, sir.
I believe this pretty much splits their property where...
It does, yes, sir.
This lets them have a unified acreage. Further comments? All in favor, please, raise your hand. Ms. Crowley, we have any other requests to speak? Commissioners have any comments or additional business? Failed to mention early on, I'd like to welcome Jim Cox here, who is our planning and zoning chairman. I don't know why you go through planning and zoning meetings and then come to commission meetings, but we're glad to see you. I believe we have Chris Noah here, who's also a member of that board. So, thank you both. I believe we have Ms. Shelley back there, who has had some interest in this, so congratulations on your new position. Also, again, Mr. Wallen, temporary director of that group. Is there any other business that come before this meeting of the commission?
Can we get the air conditioner fixed before the next meeting?
Yes, sir. It's back on now, it's working now.
It'll be cool for the next meeting. Does anybody have anything to add? Does anybody have a request to make?
I've requested...
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Do we have any objection? All in favor? We are adjourned, thank all of you for being here.
A little warm.
I'm like roasting.
I wish Mr...